Welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this May 6, 2019. It is after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, May 20, 2019. If you would, Ms. DiPaolo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Hey, we're all here, so we do have a quorum. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the members of city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I will seek a motion to approve the minutes of April 15, 2019, council meeting.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The April 15, 2019 minutes for council have been approved. That brings us communications from the mayor and administration. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke and council members. Nice to see everyone this evening. Just actually have a lot of really good news to share tonight, and we started out with a bang between finance and our total operations here at the city with Joel presenting those. I was so impressed with it. That's actually the first time I got to see the whole presentation in the same format that you did, so I just sat there and went, wow, we're doing really well as a city, and we are. So thanks to all of these gentlemen up here that really make the thing come together and go, so I appreciate the efforts that went into that. Some interesting things to present to you. We got this email just last week from Penny Geeks, is what it's called. Gabriel Sutton sent them to us. It says Worcester wins most charming cities in Ohio award. It says, just wanted to let you know that Worcester ranked number one on our 2019 list of most charming cities in Ohio. There's a link to the article. It says Worcester, take a trip down Midwestern memory lane and find a huge selection of antiques, books, boutiques, fitness, furniture, art and jewelry at Blue Spruce Boutique and poppy by Persnickety. So it's a little bit dated, the basis of what they're putting it on, but still saying about our downtown and all the different selections there, and finishes off by talking about ending the day at J-Fab, a little brewery with the feel of a German beer hall. So this just came out of the blue. It's one of the blogs out on the internet, but I thought that was sort of a neat honor to get.
Very nice.
So that one was fun. The other one that is even nicer, I think, it comes that Worcester Community Hospital is recognized as a primary stroke center. Worcester Community Hospital received certification as a primary stroke center, affirming the readiness of Worcester Community Hospital to manage a full range of stroke-related medical problems. So another high accolade for our city, and actually for our community. We now are, have the ability to do cardiac stents and vascular stents, and now we also have the ability to diagnose and treat strokes as soon as we see them. In fact, we even start that process in our squads with some of the medications that can be administered now because of the interconnection with the hospital and the ER docs that can instruct our paramedics on what medicines to give. You'll see up on the displays here, an interesting picture. This actually came in from Tom Martin here, who has joined us tonight. Tom is with Gojo. He's an engineer with Gojo and really has been at the forefront of getting the old Rubbermaid facility reconfigured into something that Gojo has made quite a home in. So I'm going to let him tell the story. I was all prepared to, and Tom said, well, I'll just come and share with myself. So Tom Martin, please.
That would be great. Push the button, the talk mute button there on it.
Okay. My name is Tom Martin. I've got to know most of you already. I'm the Director of Facilities, Intermodal Health and Safety for Gojo. Last Thursday, I was really excited to share this photo with Bob and the rest of the team. This is the very first delivery of resin pellets we have received by truck at the Gojo facility here on 585. The fascinating thing about this picture, though, is the two gentlemen in the picture. The one on the left with his back turned, his name is Mark Strup. He's an employee with our team. He worked at Rubbermaid before that facility shut down. One of their places, we hired him back a few years ago, and he was there delivering, managing the delivery of the resin pellets. And we came to find out that the truck driver on the right, his name is Doug, he also was there years ago delivering those plastic pellets for Rubbermaid. And so both of them in 2004 were present when the last delivery was made and were present last Thursday when the very first one was made for Gojo to start using those silos for plastic to make our plastic pieces. So I thought that was a really fascinating, for me, microcosm of what that meant to us to be part of that process, to see the place kind of coming back alive, to take those silos that were left behind and turn them into something useful, and to have folks who worked there before come back, not just Gojo employees, but also service providers, and really kind of help bring it back to service. And it was really not possible without the help of city council, without the mayor's office, the development commission, and all the help from the community that really made this happen. So I wanted to share that with Bob and also share it with you. So we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. And I was here last September with my son. He had a school project. I wanted to report that he got an A. So thank you.
Well, having been here once, I'm surprised you came back. Just kidding.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. So I thought that was quite the story, a 15-year span between 2004, when the last delivery for Rubbermaid, and here in 2019, where the first delivery for Gojo. But it shows life is coming back in that facility in a great fashion and actually roaring back as far as the timelines that we had initially thought were going to happen. So great news there. This is one more thing. Actually, two weeks from last night, or yesterday, is the big bike trail ride from our city down to Fredericksburg, or you can do a halfway point. So it's my last pitch before city council, because the next time it'll be over. But to date, we've raised $7,245 over at the Wayne County Community Foundation. Our goal is to reach at least $10,000, because we're what's called an acorn fund right now, so we can't touch any of those dollars until we hit $10,000. And then anything above, then we have availability to use to help maintain trails or put trails in and those kind of things. So that's our goal, and if you can support us in any way, shape, or form, or talk it up to your friends and neighbors, that would be great. It will really help our city become connected to the National Trail Network. And the last thing I have for you tonight, you do have a memo from me concerning the compensation committee, the mandated committee that we have to put together this year. Thank you for your input, council people. We tried to utilize all the people that were recommended, or as many as we possibly could. This is a list of nine individuals. Their both parties are represented, four and five. It's almost an equal representation of male and female, and all awards are represented. So we've met really any of the guidelines we have, and I ask that you consider giving this your approval tonight, and so this commission can start their business. So with that, that's everything I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And seeing that's on the agenda right after communications from mayor's slate administration, how do you want to do this? Do you want to go by individuals, or do you want to go by approving the slate as proposed by the mayor? I don't care how you wish to do it.
I say the full slate.
I agree.
All right, then I need a motion in a second.
So moved to take the recommendations for the compensation committee as a whole before council approval.
Okay. Motion to approve the slate of compensation committee members as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic, and it was Mr. Ansel that made the motion. I guess we'll just do this by roll call vote. Would you please call the roll on the motion for the approval of the slate of members?
Ansel.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
All right, the compensation commission is approved as proposed by the mayor, and I know most of everyone sitting here had input on that, and I appreciate the mayor making an effort to contact people. I know it's not an easy job to get volunteers to do anything for any cause, be it the municipality or for some other organization. And I'd also like to recognize Ms. DiPaolo with regard to the presentation we had. She did a large part in putting that PowerPoint presentation together, so thank you, Ms. DiPaolo.
You're welcome.
You have more talents than just reading legislation.
I do.
Okay. No petitions, no communications from the public. Mr. Anderson passed out the thing on General Worcester, and I would suggest that maybe the administration talked with the finance committee about having a finance committee meeting to discuss whether or not we might kick some city funds that way, so that Mr. Anderson could come and give a presentation on what's gone on and what's going on and what the ultimate result will be. Although I understand that the miniature 18-inch prototype of the statue of General Worcester has been cast in bronze, so I think it's an exciting project. Committee reports. We had a finance committee report in essence by having the presentation of the first quarter. Do you want to go over the highlights there, Mr. Ansel?
Yes. Again, I want to thank Joel Montgomery, Andre Dordia, and the rest of the city staff who worked diligently to summarize the fiscal and the administrative slash operating performance of the city during the first quarter. And the top-level summary, again, it was a very thorough and comprehensive summary, but it's all good news. Our revenues are above projected plan, which is always positive. Our expenses are all below plan, which is very positive. We have about 175 days in our rainy day funds currently. That's a comfortable margin. That's where we like to maintain the 150 to 200 days in our rainy day fund. And 2019 is on track to be a record-setting year in terms of revenue and capital investment and all of the performance indicators that are very positive for the city of Worcester. I want to also compliment Ms. DiPaolo for a very nicely formatted and understandable presentation. It was very nicely done. I welcome all constituents, citizens of Worcester, to go to the Worcester website if they would like to review that. It is very, you know, it's top-level, but it's a great summary that I think we should all be very proud of and recognize the fact that the fiscal performance, as well as the operations performance of the city of Worcester, and I used the word superlative before, is really at a high level and a very positive trend is being established as we continue in the fiscal year 2019. So again, thank you very much, and thanks to citizens for all of their cooperation and support.
And if I might add, Mr. Ansel, not that the administration hasn't done the great works, but without the cooperation and foresight of this council, many of the things that we saw in that report were a result of the legislation passed by this group sitting here, so the council should not be left out in terms of getting some praise, too.
It's an exceptional framework of teamwork and cooperation and support. Agreed.
One item under unfinished business, Resolution Number 2019-32, which was amended because of certain language with regards to calendar year's budgetary circumstances. So this will be presented by Mr. Cavan. It's the second reading, so it is slated for three readings, but before I get to you, Mr. Cavan, I will have our PowerPoint specialist, Ms. DiPaolo, read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-32 amended. A resolution authorizing the police chief to enter into a contract with Axon for the purchase of Axon Fleet Two in-car cameras.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Yes, this is a resolution asking for purchase of cameras that are able to interface with officers' body cameras. Chief Fisher was here last meeting, and he explained to us that Axon uses a cloud-based system that syncs the car cameras with the body cameras and stores all that information in one location. The discussion that we had last meeting was that we need to include a language that had mentioned that it was a five-year contract, and there's a statement regarding that this was for multiple budgeted years. So I think that is included this time. And as far as I was concerned, I thought we were all on board with it last meeting, and we were ready to go ahead and make that purchase if we clean up the legislation. So I would make a proposal to move this to the third and final reading.
All right.
Catherine Rotolo here, if anyone has.
There's a motion that's, I'm sorry. There's a motion to suspend the rules, is there, by Mr. Cavan? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. I turn to you again, Mr. Cavan. Do you have anything else for the order?
No, really, I think we.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. We pretty much covered it last time.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, if anyone has questions or comments, and as Mr. Cavan says, Assistant Chief Rotolos, here is to answer any questions. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2019-32 as amended passes. Brings us to our last piece of legislation, which is under new business. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and at least my resolution indicates that it's a budgeted item, so suspension of the rules will not be necessary, but it will be necessary for Ms. DiPaolo to read the title before I get to you, Mr. Silvestri.
Resolution Number 2019-33. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the Sycamore Lane waterline replacement project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This piece of legislation calls for the authorization of our administrator to enter into a contract after advertising for bids for the replacement of a waterline on Sycamore Lane. 300 linear feet are included. Currently, it's a six-inch cast iron waterline. We're going to be upgrading that both in size to an eight-inch and also in quality to ductile iron pipe. This piece of waterline was installed in 1960. It's beyond its useful life, and we'd like to also replace the four water surfaces along this line, and there is one fire hydrant that's going to be replaced along with this as well. I'm going to thank Roger, who couldn't be here this evening, for doing all of the engineering design, construction, administration, and inspection. And I know the inspection is yet to come with the timeline of the project, but I want to thank him and his staff for doing that in-house and saving the city those engineering dollars. As the president said, this is fully budgeted, so I do move for adoption this evening.
So are you moving to adopt? Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll for the motion to adopt?
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution Number 2019-33 is approved. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start with Mr. Bastancic.
Nothing worth discussing.
All right, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I just want to encourage everybody to come out and support the trail ride coming up in a couple of weeks. It should be a lot of fun. You don't have to go all the way to Fredericksburg if you don't want to, so just join the festivities. It's an exciting project coming to fruition for the city. I also would like to see the city and council support the statue on our square. I know we've done a lot of work on our downtown and on downtown square, and I think this would be a nice addition to replace the General Worcester statue. So I look forward to hearing more about that project. Also wanted to thank my friend and colleague, Mr. Ansel, for summarizing the finance report that took an hour and two minutes, which is excellent. And I want to let the citizens of Worcester know that detailed reports of each department, which they've spent a lot of time putting out there and getting the information available to all of us, not just city council, but for everyone, are on the city's website at worsteroh.com, on Administration under Reports. So please take advantage of that information. It lets people know what's going on behind the scenes and what hard work our different departments are doing in the city.
Out of bounds.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes. I want to thank the administration for the overview. It was very comprehensive and really nice presentation. Law's and ordinance committee would like to hold a meeting on the 20th at 6:30 PM. And that's all I have.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for the coda there, so, all right. Mr. Silvestri.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the mayor for all of his bringing the accolades of our city to greater visibility and letting us and the public know about them here. And along those lines, I want to thank Mr. Tom Marty for coming from Gojo. I did want to go ahead and add that back in 2004, at that time, I, as well, was a Rubbermaid employee. I was responsible for managing the placement of those resin rail cars for the silos. So if we ever had to bring in a load via truck, it was usually because something didn't go right to get us through a weekend, but 2004 was the last time I did that before the Rubbermaid facility closed down. So I just, it was kind of close to my heart to see those silos being used for resin again, and what a great fit you and your company are for that facility. It's great to see it in operation. Thanks.
Ms. Warden.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Mr. Ansel.
Yes, I too would like to thank Mr. Marty for coming down and sharing the positive message regarding Gojo's resurrection of the abandoned manufacturing facility within Worcester. And more importantly, on behalf of city council, the city administration, and the entire city of Worcester, thank the Gojo executive team and staff for their vision and commitment within our community. We're proud to have you as our neighbor, world-class company, and truly, the vision that your organization had for that facility and also for our community has been very, very positive, and I know it's going to continue to be positive well into the future. So make sure that they get that message. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Cavan, you get the last word.
Last word. Yeah, I too would want to convey sentiments to the administration for the report we were given, and more importantly, I mean, we're moving onward, upward. Things seem to be in order, and again, you are to be commended for that. Thank you.
And I see Mr. Ansel gave a.
Motion to adjourn.
I signed a motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned.